All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Monday, January 6th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting into order. First item up tonight is the invocation and a pledge of allegiance by Pastor David Clift of Mayock United Methodist Church. With sir, please come on up.
Let us pray. Dear God, it's the beginning of 2020. New opportunities, new challenges, new possibilities. So we ask for your guidance as we charge into 2020. We ask your blessing upon all those who have accepted the mantle of leadership. They are gifted individuals. Lord, we pray that they will use their giftedness for the good of our county. They are intelligent individuals. We pray that they will use their minds for the good of our county. We pray that you will give them all the things that they need to serve your people. Lord, we also ask that you protect them. We live in a world there seems to be more criticism than encouragement, more hostility than love, more cruelty than civility. So, Lord, you be with them as they lead us. And, Lord, we pray a special prayer for all of our first responders. 2020 is here, and with it, they begin statistics again. And, Lord, it is our humble in prayer that one statistic that would go away forever would be the one where our first responders are injured or harmed in the service of people. So, Lord, you just guide us. You be our strength and our shield, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Next up is approval of the agenda, and we have a couple additions this evening and changes. Please, Ms. Jones?
I make a motion that we move cassette agenda item number six, the resolution celebrating the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, to be heard as the first item under New Business.
Okay, thank you. So we'll put that down as item A, and then change accordingly down the line. Anything else? Paul, are you seconding? Did you say something? I'm sorry.
I second it.
You second it? Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you all. Public comment is the next item up. Mr. Samantha Williamson. I'll remind everyone that comes up this evening to limit their comments to three minutes, and the lights will let you know how long you have to go, and to give us your name and address, if you would, please, for the record.
Okay. Samantha Williamson, 103 Brady Loop Court in Maple, North Carolina, 27956. Can I begin?
Go ahead. What's on your mind?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Samantha Williamson, and I currently live in Currituck County. More specifically, I live in Brady Landing Air Park in Maple. I have been a proud Currituck resident for almost five years. Before I continue, I just want to say thank you for letting me speak tonight. The reason why I am speaking tonight is because I've been going through the most devastating time in my life. My business, my livelihood, and my passion have been stripped from me. Last November, I received a covenant violation letter personally delivered by my HOA president, and it stated that there was a complaint about my home occupation, running a small in-home daycare. Please note, I only have one family currently enrolled in my care. One car comes and goes from 7:00 a.m. and then at 6:00 p.m. I responded with a letter from my attorney proposing a solution. My HOA board responded with a lawsuit that included a temporary restraining order. The temporary restraining order was to seize and assist my in-home daycare. As of December 2nd, the lawsuit was settled. Due to the HOA threatening for me to pay their attorney fees as well as my attorney fees, I had to accept a permanent injunction to end my business. Even though having a daycare is considered a home occupation in Currituck County, even though our covenants allow our residents to have a home occupation, I had to spend the money I did have on attorney fees. My business was shut down since November of last year, and as a single mom of two young boys, the situation has prevented me from providing for my family. Thanksgiving, Christmas, mortgage bills, all have been a struggle. The situation has prevented me from continuing to apply for my daycare license. I had a waiting list of parents that were expected to start as soon as I obtained my license. I had a licensing consultant coming up from Raleigh, and this has all been pending since the complaint. Like I said, I purchased a beautiful and spacious home in Brady Landing Air Park. I lived on a busy road. I lived on Maple Road for five years, and I thought moving into this neighborhood was going to be the sense of community that I wanted and that I earned for. Members of the HOA board president were fully aware of what I did for a living prior to even me signing for the new house. Some of my neighbors, as well as myself, spoke directly to the HOA board president, and he gave his approval as long as there wasn't a lot of traffic. Why do I do what I do? Why do I love what I do? Because every morning I wake up knowing that I get to be with my two kids, as well as providing care for other people's children in the county. If the HOA board president, as well as the neighborhood and other HOA members, were fully aware of what I did, how, how can they circumvent the state and local laws and take away my livelihood? In closing, I'm asking for assistance from the Currituck County Commissioner's Office to write a letter to my HOA board of directors prior to our HOA meeting next, or January 18th. I am urging you all to cite that the board of directors misapplied the D.W. Easement Agreement. Please help me shine a light on this issue, and please help me see the light at the end of this tunnel. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Ms. Williamson. So you said that the, your HOA bylaw specifically allowed for you to have small businesses?
A home occupation, yes. And it does not say anything that a daycare is not a home occupation. It doesn't say there's a process that you have to go through. It just says you have to have approval. And I had that approval when I was starting to look at the house last spring, so way before I even signed my closing agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I am well familiar with this case.
I figured you were.
Right? And as timing would have it, our attorney was sitting in the courtroom when that injunction was asked for by that homeowners' association, and they misrepresented the constraints that the county had on three separate legal items that they claimed to prohibit her activity. They misrepresented what those three things were. They used the FAA as an example. They cited the county's, you know, permission to use the gate to access the airport as part of the example, and they used a commercial business, which is an FAA compliant, which specifically, you can't run an aviation-oriented business, which is what they used to try to assert that her business was violating. What the FAA doesn't want is aircraft mechanics working in their houses outside of the airport. And so that's the piece of statute that they used to try to apply to her.
Right. And if I can comment on that, if I can, basically, they said that me having my daycare would get the gate shut down, and we have emails from our president that went out to everybody in the neighborhood that said exactly that. And we met with Ike, and he said, "That's not the case. If I have my daycare, the gate will not be shut down. It's not in any violation."
Okay. All right. Well, I certainly think we'll have further discussion.
We're on it.
I appreciate it.
And see what, if anything, we can do at a county level.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Next up, I have Kathy Fayoc?
Fayoc?
Fayoc? All right. I was close.
Hi there. My name's Kathy Fayoc. I live at 101 Brady Loop Court in Maple, North Carolina, also in the Brady Landing Air Park. My husband and I sold Ms. Williamson our house next door, and during that process, we did tell the board president what her occupation was, what her husband's occupation was, and he told us, "That's perfectly fine, as long as there's no traffic." And as we progressed in the build of our new home, he had met with us several times, and we discussed the same thing. He'd ask how our sale was going. We'd, you know, say pleasantries. He'd say, you know, "Yeah, if she watches children, that's great. I have no problem with that, as long as there's no traffic." And in the air park, from August 1st through November 1st, two aircraft taxied down our roadways to the gate, to the airport, and that was on a Saturday and Sunday. Nothing went Monday through Friday, and most of the folks that live there walk their kids two, three times a day. My husband walks our dogs all the time. There's just virtually no aircraft traffic. So what I don't understand is why they didn't offer mediation to this young lady. Why did they go directly to a civil lawsuit versus mediation? I think she was well within her rights. She had planned on presenting at the January meeting to get the entire association agreement that she would start her licensing to become a daycare provider. She was willing to limit that to four or five children, or even three, but they didn't give her that opportunity. And I'm here to ask for your assistance in helping us to show that the easement agreement was not in jeopardy. In fact, I would go further to ask if we could amend the easement agreement to include that it's just for aeronautical commercial activity only, and that's what is referenced.
We actually don't have to, because it's already, that is what the restriction is, is aviation-oriented business. So there's nothing to amend.
There's a section in there that they quoted that says, "No, in the residential air park, no commercial activity at all," and so they're considering this a commercial activity. So I was hoping that we could at least include, unless approved by the UDO, in the table, the ordinance table.
I think, and Ike, please jump in, but I think the commercial activity is defined by the county as commercial activity, and in-home business does not, I don't think, falls into that category.
Well, the county interprets that language and looks at it as the FAA has deemed a commercial activity within an air park, and that is aeronautical-related business. And, of course, that was the other reason for having that limitation in the easement, is the county did not want to have someone in Brady Landing Air Park competing with a fixed-based operator or somebody else working on the county's airfield.
Paying the county monthly to do that.
Right. So that evidently was utilized, though, by the property owners' association as part of their claim against Ms. Williamson, which the county, of course, had nothing to do with, and learned about this after all that was underway.
Ironically, I personally have witnessed individuals in the air park violate what is, no kidding, prohibited activities, i.e., using your POVs to go through that gate in order to cross over to the airport. So, yeah.
Is using that gate for other than taxing an aircraft to or from Brady Landing Air Park is a definitive violation of the easement, and the terms of easement provide for the consequences of that occurring, which is a period of time after notification to cure that default, and it could ultimately itself cause revocation of the easement should the county so choose.
Okay.
Any help you all can provide?
And then, just for my fellow board members, you know, we hear about aircraft driving down the roads, and keep in mind, safe, per the FAA, safe taxi speed is no faster than a man can walk, and you can stop an aircraft pretty darn fast. So it's not like they're taxing, getting ready to take off, and they're doing 20, 30 miles an hour. They're actually going significantly slower than that. And so, you know, I've heard through talking to individuals that the concern was, "Well, you know, now you got a kid out there, or there's somebody out there on the street, and we're taxing an aircraft. I'll go by the airport someday and see how many people are walking around the ramp where there's aircraft fueling and moving all the time." Pilots are trained to look after and be careful, and there's no undue hazard associated with what's going on in there.
Right. And there are child-at-place signs. There's 15 mile-per-hour speed limits when you're coming in either way to the air park. Her driveway accommodates six vehicles. It's not like someone's going to be parked on the taxiway dropping off the children. It's just, in my opinion, ludicrous, and we sure could use your help.
Okay.
Sounds like the HOA needs to...
Hopefully, we'll change it out. Not really sure that'll happen, though. But thank you.
All right. Thank you. I don't have anyone else sign up this evening for public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner's report, and I will start that off this evening. Did I miss something? No, thanks. You give me evil ass. As you'll notice, we're down one commissioner this evening. Commissioner Payment had a family member pass away, so he cannot be in attendance this evening, and we certainly wish him and his family all the best in their time of need. And I wanted to pass on a few things. This year has certainly been a busy one and a sad one to boot. Last month, we lost Commissioner Marion Gilbert, and, or former Commissioner Marion Gilbert, and she served as Commissioner here in Currituck County for eight years. And I just want to say, she was tireless in her support of Currituck Kids and was heavily involved in the Alabama Law Commission as well. It was my pleasure to serve with her for two years, my initial two years, and I can say that she was selfless and truly caring for Currituck County, and that she will be missed. This year, in my district, I'll highlight a couple of things that have moved forward. We've broke ground on the Maritime Museum that will both preserve and teach others about our stories at county. We've begun the process to put together pedestrian walking plan for the village in Corolla. We've also begun the process of repairing and/or replacing the public walkovers over on the beach that the county maintains. Additionally, we're looking at adding some other areas to the Corolla walking plan, and Willhead in particular, and they're working through the details on that, so you'll see those come into 2020, and there's some crossover projects. In the Corolla area, we increased funding for our road repairs, and the road committee has identified several areas to work on. Some of those improvements will be in the area of drainage. Hopefully, this will result in some, the road repairs lasting much longer and help with some storm drainage to at least a little bit of a degree, once they get some of the culverts reinstalled and ditches open back up. It is my hope that our efforts will be an example to the other 4x4 beach communities, and hopefully, they'll decide to get on board and participate in what appears to be a very good private-public partnership now with the county helping to administer their needs in the 4x4 area with respect to their roads and some drainage issues. We've seen the completion of the Ocean Sands water treatment and removed the old one. I think you can agree that that was an odiferous process for a little while in there, but we cut through it, depending on which way the wind was blowing. As a county, we've seen a new manager come on, and through that process, the board, for the first time that I know of, sat down and had a two-day visioning session at Ben's urging, and that helped us recognize and identify our goals as individuals for our respective districts and as a group, and helped give planning staff, you know, some good direction to go in and pro our towards those things going forward, so we can complete those tasks. There's quite a few things happening on the mainland. As Corolla's my district, I will let the other commissioners, if they have anything to say about their various areas, chime in. We're also entering our budget season for the county, and we'll have many challenges laying ahead. I know Ben loves budget season, and he's excited about that one. As everybody knows, we're in need of a new school, and the board is working diligently with the school board and county staff and their staff to move that along in a thoughtful and expeditious manner. We have some new businesses opening up and many prospects on the horizon. 2020 looks to be a very busy year, and as we continue to grow as a county, ever mindful of our past, I look forward to those challenges as we move forward into a new decade and tackling them with my fellow board members and staff. And that is all I have this evening. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was under our consent agenda, but it's now been moved under New Business, and hopefully, we will pass tonight a resolution celebrating the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. In simple terms, the 19th Amendment stated that the right of citizens to vote shall not be denied by any state on account of sex. But did you know that this passage came down to just one vote? The amendment needed three-fourths of the then 48 states to pass. Tennessee State Representative Harry T. Burns, at the very last minute, changed his vote because of a letter that he had in his pocket from his mother asking him to please grant her the right to vote. Yes, one vote can make a difference. One vote is what made it possible for Ms. Jarvis and me to serve the great citizens of Currituck County. Yes, one vote has changed the course of history in several incidents. People have died fighting for the freedom of free elections, and it's a privilege that we as citizens should cherish and not take for granted. Being a former director of elections, and Mrs. Jarvis being a former precinct official, and both of us being women, elections are very special to us. Man or woman, black or white, young or old, it's a privilege that you should always cherish. So please remember that this year, the primary election is earlier than usual and will be held on Tuesday, March 3rd. So make sure you're registered to vote and vote, because your one vote could make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. You ready, Mr. Belmont?
No comment this evening.
Hard to follow that.
I just would like to recognize, I had the honor to work with Commissioner, former Commissioner Marion Gilbert for two years, super lady. She did a lot in the community. She was always at every event for Currituck Kids. She had a huge heart, and she loved this county. We had a couple other passings recently, this month, that were, you know, icons to the county. Fletcher Humphries, who owns tons of business in Mayock, passed away a couple weeks ago. I actually talked to his daughter today at Charboro Elementary School. And Carl Davis, who formerly owned Coinchuck Marina for 20-plus years, and now his son, Louis, owns it. I had the honor of working for Carl from 15 to 25 at Coinchuck Marina, and they're good people. They employ a lot of people in this county. Like I said, just, those are just a few things. 2019, it's in the books. 2020's here. Let's move forward. We've got a lot of exciting new things. We've got Wendy's coming to Mayock, it's going to be open probably April. County attorney's super excited. I've already promised him...
Frosty and fries?
Yeah, Frosty and fries are combo meal on me. But that being said, just, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff coming for 2020. You know, the ball fields at the, by the YMCA, that area, I mean, it's just, it's amazing how good and how much revenue that generates to the county, and the comments that we hear on how nice our ball fields are, and I mean, I think we had 40-some tournaments this year. They were forecast in like high 30s, and I think it was a little bit above it, which Parks and Rec use those fields, too, and that's growing every year as well. So 2020, we're here. Happy New Year to everybody, and Commissioner Etheridge is up.
All right. Mr. Etheridge, turn her up.
Well, as you all know, Mayock is growing, and I have the distinct honor and privilege of representing District 5, Mayock. But, you know, people ask me, "What's the difference now, being on the Board of Commissioners, versus when I first came on the board in 1994?" And I have to say, it's social media is one of the big differences. People get false courage sitting behind a keyboard, and they'll say things on Facebook and other social media sites that they won't say to your face. And it makes it more difficult for us to sit up here and try to serve the citizens of the county, to be constantly criticized when people don't understand the rules that we have to operate under that is dictated by the state of North Carolina. I served with one former commissioner who used to say, "We're commissioners. We can do anything we want to do." But as the county attorney will back me up on, we can only do what the state of North Carolina tells us we can do. People say that we're facing a lot of challenges in the coming years, and I look at these challenges as opportunities. Opportunities to improve and enhance the quality of life that I think Currituck County takes no backseat to anyone on. We have a great quality of life. We do things trying to help the citizens there, and we don't always do things right. But it's the intent of this Board of Commissioners and everyone I've served on, and I too served with Ms. Gilbert when she first came on the board. And as I, as it's been said, I look at 2020 as I'm entering my now fourth decade of service to the citizens of Currituck County, and it gives me a great deal of satisfaction to look at people and know that I have done some things that maybe has helped them, and I will continue to do that, and I wish everybody a happy 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jarvis?
Well, from the seasoned veteran to the newbie, 2019 has been a very exciting time. It brought me to this position, and I am thankful for the opportunities and the doors that has opened. I'm thankful to serve, and it has just been a great year. December was no different. I had some great opportunities. I was able to attend my first Juvenile Crime Prevention Council meeting, and I look forward to serving on that board, that council, next, this year, 2020. Also had a great opportunity to present with Laurie and Ike at a Chamber of Commerce Leadership class down in Dare County. We got to teach a little class on Currituck County government. They did a super job, and they let me tag along and talk about my experience. Ike commented that I did a great job. I said, "Well, I hope so. I taught for 30 years, and I see several students out there, so just keep your opinion of that teaching maybe to yourself." But it was really fun, and it makes me excited, because Currituck County is starting a citizen academy, and I look forward to the opportunity that this will bring to our citizens to learn about county government, to talk about what rules the state puts upon us, to talk about what opportunities there are for citizens in this county. So I encourage you to read about it in the latest edition of Focus on Currituck. It's on the website under Public Information, and of course, it should have come to your homes as well. And so, here's to a great 2020. If 2020 is half as wonderful as 2019, relish it, bring it on, and I look forward to another year of service. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is County Manager's Report. Ms. Stikelether?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To kind of piggyback on the comments about the Citizens Academy, it is in the focus. We've actually, the applications aren't up yet. Feel free to contact our Public Information Officer if you want to kind of go in and put your name in the hat for that. We've actually already got four applicants without an application, so that's not too shabby. So we're actually going to run two of those. We're going to run one this spring on the mainland, and then we're going to run one in the fall on the Outer Banks, so that we can try to get information to folks on both sides of the Currituck Sound. We also recently passed a deadline for a new grant program that the board adopted, using tourism dollars to try to grow events for tourists to come into our community. We actually budgeted around $100,000 to, at $20,000 per for that, and we've had nine applications right out of the bat. So that, I think that's really a big success that we should tout. The other thing I wanted to talk about, we've come through the holidays, and I think it's worth noting that our Department of Social Services puts together Operation Santa every year and kind of heads that up, and this year, that department was able to provide Christmas to over 300 children. It's not just DSS, though. It's what was talked about earlier. It's the community coming together, different organizations giving, I mean, even the Planning Department put together, and Inspections Department put together, a raffle for a generator to raise money for it. I mean, it's all, you know, it's a sense of community here that makes this job, anyway, worth doing. And just on a personal note, had some stuff going on lately, and I want to say thank you to all the elected officials. We had my son, my middle one, was a little under the weather, and all the elected officials and all the staff and all the citizens, who, it was a real outpouring of support and concern, and I greatly appreciate that. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next item up is Agenda Administrative Reports. Item A, recognition and presentation of advanced law enforcement certificates and Sheriff Department employee recognition. Department employee recognition. At this time, I'd like to ask our sheriff to come on up, and Sheriff, did you want to, were you going to hit on what it takes to get this requirement for these deputies? Okay, all right. Well, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing us to come forward and recognize our officers, recognize the board for providing and supporting us in this training effort, and to let our community know that we're training at the highest levels that are available out there. This is a very significant achievement. It takes hundreds, sometimes thousands, of hours, depending of additional training besides your law enforcement training, depending on your years of service. Our goal is, when each officer is eligible for his advanced law enforcement certificate, that our agency be at 100%. I don't know if there's any other agency that can say that, but that's our goal. And the tough part about that is that you have to have the support and the finances to do that, and we're getting that from the county, so I want to thank y'all very much. I'm going to read one of the certificates and then hand one to each officer, or have my administrative staff help me with that. So if I could read that to you?
Absolutely.
All right, this is the advanced law enforcement certificate from the state of North Carolina Department of Justice. I don't know if I can see it overhead. I can't see that. By virtue of the authority vested in it by the laws of the state, and in recognition of the attainment of training and educational objectives, commensurate with the role of a professional law enforcement officer, and of personal devotion to the service of the people of North Carolina, the Attorney General and the chairman and the members of the North Carolina Sheriff's Education and Training Standards Commission, through the authority vested in them by the laws of the state, hereby present to you your North Carolina Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. So if I could have those officers that are here come up front, and we'll give you your award.
You up for that? Get out here.
If you guys, actually, maybe come up here, if that'd be good. Would you up for here or right?
Right up front, it's fine. Come on up.
Yeah, right up front, guys, if y'all would.
They've heard it. Down on the front, big guy.
All right, our first officer that we're going to, excuse me, our first officer that we're going to present an award to for his advanced law enforcement certificate, and this is a significant achievement, and this is why we asked to do this, because it is so significant, but Sergeant Neil Smith. And Sergeant William Davenport. And one other thing, I, because Commissioner McCord is in his commissioner role, I didn't call him sergeant, but he's also a sergeant with the sheriff's office. There was one other employee we wanted to do one other recognition. Swanny Dudley, who is with our agency, was recently promoted to the sergeant of our detective division, which is a huge accomplishment, and she has been a leader in that division for a long time, just with some conflict. She hadn't made it, but we want to let the community know that she is renowned in this area for being a leader and a go-to person, not just with our agency, but with other agencies, our district attorney's office, and we want to give her some recognition for that great achievement that she has made. And again, we want to thank all the officers, thank the commissioners, the county, and thank the people of Currituck County. Thank you very much.
You got to have a party or anything?
I'm good.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before they leave, I'd like for them to people to understand that this coming Thursday, January 9, is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I think every one of us in this county should say thank you to these officers, who, they basically put their life on the line every day, that they're out there serving us, and we certainly appreciate your service.
Thank you. All right, next item up on the agenda is new business, and I know this is one Commissioner Jarvis is excited about, a resolution to celebrate the League of Women Voters and their 100th anniversary.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Etheridge, she was right, this is a monumental year in the history of the United States. When our founding fathers wrote the Constitution back in 1787, they could have never imagined that women would play the role in our country that they do today. And that's the beauty of the document that they created. They created a flexible, living, evolving document that allows our Constitution to change with the times. And 100 years ago, the men in power saw the wisdom of allowing the other half of our country to vote. So without further ado, I would like to read the resolution celebrating the League of Women Voters and the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Whereas, an organized movement to enfranchise women began in July 1848 at a convention in Seneca Falls, New York. And whereas, through the efforts of brave and courageous women referred to as suffragists who sacrificed family, their personal life, and their financial resources for over 70 years to gain equal rights for women, especially the right to vote. And whereas, men and women, black and white, supported women's suffrage movement for women to gain constitutional right of having a voice in the making of laws that govern them. And whereas, the women's suffrage movement led to the passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States in 1919, with ratification by the states by the summer of 1920. And whereas, the National Women's Suffrage Association dissolved in 1920 to create the League of Women Voters of the United States to register voters and educate all voters. And whereas, the League of Women Voters of North Carolina was launched on October 7, 1920, on the steps of the Guilford County Courthouse by Gertrude Wile, a politically active and tireless young woman from Goldsboro, North Carolina. And whereas, more than 120,000 women were registered to vote in North Carolina by 1920. And whereas, women today constitute a majority in our state and in the United States and are running for office in higher numbers and more active in the electing process than ever before in history. Therefore, be it resolved that the 100th anniversary of women gaining the right to vote and the founding of the League of Women Voters in the United States and in North Carolina is recognized for the impact these historic accomplishments have had on citizen engagement and the civic life of the community, the state, and the nation.
Thank you. Would you like to second?
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, resolution authorizing the purchase of cam stroke meters from Fortline Inc. through the sole source purchase. Is that you, Mr. McCree?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Before you is a resolution that will authorize a water systems acquisition of 386 water meters at a price of $65,928.80. Under the North Carolina state bid laws, this would normally be required to go through at least an informal bid process, where the department would seek quotes from at least two, preferably three vendors, and then award a contract or purchase agreement to the lowest bidder. There is an exception to the law, which is before you tonight. It must be approved by you by this resolution that allows for a unit of local government to purchase certain equipment when standardization or compatibility is an overriding consideration. That is the case with regard to these meters. The Water Department has previously purchased, under this sole purchase exception, these particular meters, which were only authorized to be distributed by one company in North Carolina, so there's only one source that the department may acquire these water meters through. And secondly, these water meters are compatible with software that the Water Department uses in order to pursue the proper functioning and operation of the Water Department. So this resolution, again, is before you to authorize this purchase under the sole source purchase exception of the state bid laws, and staff recommends its approval.
Okay. Discussion from the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item C, Commissioner Travel, Chairman White, myself, to visit North Carolina Tourism Conference. As some of the public may know, we've adopted a policy of bringing stuff with respect to where we travel before the Board of Commissioners, basically to inform the public and to let the commissioners know what's going on. And we also made a few changes. I've had a comment recently about travel and people going out of state or out of the area, and I think it's important to note that when we travel, one of the changes this board made a couple of years ago was that we only get per diem rates, so we travel at the same expense as anyone else in the county does. We don't get to go eat filet mignon every night on taxpayer dollars. If we do, we got to pay the difference, which has happened. Commissioners have gone out, and they came back in and paid the difference in what was allowable and what was not allowable. So just wanted to make that clear, and after the board's permission to...
We're being operable.
Second.
I was going to say the same thing. I just, I didn't know where the conference was, that's all.
Asheville.
Asheville, I was talking.
Yep. Yep, I'll be freezing up in March in Asheville. It might actually be cold there. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next general item, Commissioner Payman is not here this evening, but I think we can probably proceed with him, understanding what he's doing. He's going to, leading the way to Board Excellence at the UNC School of Government, and he is, this program will take place at the Western Carolina University with a two-day session in March, or two days, two-day sessions in March, April, May, and June, and it's a local elected leaders academy through the School of Government, and basically, it's for elected leaders to make themselves better, self-improvement, of course, so.
Move for approval.
All right, who said it first? Selena? All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda this evening is Board Appointments. First up is Fire and EMS Advisory Board.
Under the current structure, although we have approved increasing the numbers to seven, under the current structure, we still have Ryland Poyner out of Crawford has been a member of the board, backfilling for Bobby Bavir. I think Bavir, and I think part of that is when Bobby went county full-time in Corolla, it became a little too hard. So this is basically formally approving him as a consensus appointment. I move for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge, on the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Library Board of Trustees.
He's nominating Charlotte Martin.
All right.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Recreation Advisory Board.
I will nominate Ted Jaguki for the Recreation Advisory Board. He's filling an unexpired term through January 2021.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Senior Citizen Advisory Board.
I will move to approve Roberta Deffenball as the nomination to fill a term that will end February 2020, and then a full appointment through 2022.
Thank you. Have a second.
I have one at four.
Oh, you want, okay.
Do you want to do mine or do them?
Oh, and would you let me do it, or you want to do it?
I mean, I can, yeah. Or I don't know if we were going to vote them in one at a time or both. I have a reappointment of Betty Fairchild to serve a full term, expire on February 1, 2022.
I move to approve both.
Thank you.
Need to add Janet Taylor in there, too.
Okay.
All right, we're getting the watch done this evening.
I guess we have a...
Okay.
All right, so we move to approve all four.
Are you moving to approval for?
Yeah, moving to approve all four.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Last item on the agenda this evening is Consent Agenda, and there was some question around item 12 underneath that, Corolla Fire Department Fire Protection Equipment Purchase. Just think it was a housekeeping thing, and Mr. Stackleather, you're going to out-laborate on that a little bit?
Yes, sir. Anytime that a volunteer fire department spends over $5,000 for personal protective equipment, it has to come to the board for approval. This particular item is to allow a different quick connect for their air system, so they can hook up the new air packs, for some rechargeable batteries for their air packs, backup batteries, and it extends a kit to extend air to the top of their platform apparatus, their ladder truck. There's documents in here. The first one is the only thing we're actually buying, or you all are approving for them to buy, I should say. The other documents are where something was ordered, and then we got credits back because it was the wrong thing, so the only thing you're approving is actually the very first invoice, and it is invoice number 7289.
Okay, thank you. Were any other questions on the Consent Agenda from the board this evening?
Move for approval.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. I'll move to, we move to a closed session pursuant to GS 143-31811A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and that concludes the regular business of the Board of Commissioners. We'll be going into a closed session. Thanks for staying with us this evening.